Thank you for being here with another round of the Source Weekly endorsement process. We're here with Oscar and Carmen, both running for Redmond School Board. To start off things, we're just gonna go start with Carmen and just please introduce yourself and say why you're running for this position.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm Carmen Lawson and I'm running for the Redmond School Board, position number four. I am a mother and a teacher and empathizer with community members. The reasons I am running for school board is because I want to be intentional about the way that I serve in my community. I do that through being an educator and I think that running for school board will help me to use the skills that I know from the classroom to have that lens of a teacher on the school board. I strongly believe that students need to have the opportunity, all students need to have all opportunities, so I really want to be an advocate for students. Every day in the classroom where I teach, I'm a resident of Redmond, but I teach in Madras, so I have lots of students that are low socioeconomic status. I have diverse demographics of students of color and so I see the challenges that they bring into the classroom and just wishing that I could help create policies and systems that will support them and their families so that they can be engaged in learning.
Thanks so much. Oscar, tell us why you're running.
It's time. It's time for me, it's time for a change in this community. We've got over 20% of our students are Latino or Latinx and we have no one representing those particular and complex issues. So I feel obligated to at least be that one person at the table discussing very important issues, a lot of it having to do with diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as providing more culturally relevant materials, curriculum, pedagogy, training, more of our teachers to be more culturally competent and humble, as well as enmandating that across the board from top to bottom. It's very important to get more teachers of color in front of our kids, so to push and help however which way I could to make that happen. I've been a social worker for 30 years and 20 of those years in schools at all levels. And most recently, I've been the empowerment programs manager here in the region for the Latino Community Association. I have three grown daughters, all college graduates. And that's the tone that I'd like to set for our families, but across the board, high expectations and provide those opportunities on an equitable basis. And that's where I would also, it would be important for me to kind of be, provide oversight to make sure that whatever spending is allocated, especially right now with the Student Success Act monies that will be coming, to make sure that those monies are applied how they are intended. So that's a little bit about what I'm about and we could discuss some of these issues and beyond as we move forward. Thanks.
Definitely, yeah. We'll get into some more, some of the things you both mentioned. My next question, and we'll start with Oscar on this one, what makes a good school board member in your opinion?
Someone who is out there visiting the schools, talking to not just the administrators, but faculty and staff, talking to students, sitting down and having lunch with them. I would make myself available as much as possible, but beyond that, the community itself, and luckily I'm in a position where I have a lot of contact with our Latino families here locally in Redmond, I live in Redmond, so I see them at the grocery market and gas stations and everywhere else and so they know me and they talk. And we've had forums and we've talked about education and so we have our, we have that finger, our finger on that pulse. And so I think, you know, bringing that community voice also to those meetings is as important as my thoughts and opinions and so forth.
Great. Carmen, would you like a repeat of that question?
Um, no, I think I got it. I just wanna, I agree with lots of the things that Mr. Gonzalez is saying, absolutely. You know, in our communities, we need to make sure that we represent, the school board needs to represent the needs of our community, but also bridging differing opinions, bridging maybe making sure that administrators, teachers, parents, people who are kind of in the trenches of the school are being heard on the school board, so they understand the policies that they're creating in the school board, how it translates into the classroom. But I absolutely agree with all that Mr. Gonzalez is saying about how it's really important that we really focus on equity in the classroom so that the students that have suffered the most, especially through the pandemic, that they get the supports that they need to bridge that opportunity gap, the activity gap, the learning gap, whatever you want to call those gaps, that were, that's where most of our focus needs to be, to bring them up and to help lift all of Central Oregon's youth.
Thank you. So this is definitely a topic that I'm sure has a lot of varying opinions for folks in Redmond. The legislature is poised to allow, to pass a bill that allows local governments the option to ban people with concealed carry permits from bringing firearms into public buildings. Do you believe that all schools and the district office should be gun-free zones with anyone who has a concealed weapon permit required to check their gun at the door? And this one will go to you first, Carmen.
Yeah, I do not believe that guns belong on school campuses. Aside from the resource officer who is a trained professional in using a gun, I do not believe that teachers or administrators or people who do not, aren't highly trained with weapons should not be, school is not a place for guns. And especially, I just keep on circling back to the youth that I work with every day, guns are a really scary thing for them, that's a really, could be a traumatic thing to think about, so school's not where that happens. School is where you need to learn and grow and feel loved and have relationships. School is not where guns need to be.
Thanks. Oscar, would you like a repeat of that question?
No, I've got it and I would just love to underscore Carmen's sentiment and Carmen, feel free to call me Oscar. Cause ditto with everything you've said, I grew up in East Los Angeles and guns and violence, the permeation in our barrios resulted in so much harm and I can't tell you how many funerals I attended growing up, but also as a school staff person. So I have some very strong views and if it was up to me, I'd get rid of all of them, except obviously for law enforcement, like our officers on campus there that are, that need to be there and our SROs obviously. But I would love to expand our role beyond just the vigilant role, but also a friend of the students, a mentor for the students, a coach for the students. I mean, there's so many possibilities because again, Carmen talked about building bridges and right now, a lot of our youth obviously are very trepidatious around law enforcement, quite naturally, particularly what the events that's transpired over the past year. So we need to be very sensitive of that and build those relationships in a positive way. And so, yeah, no guns on campus, ever.
Thank you. So another legislative thing, last, this March, the Legislature allocated 250 million for summer programs to help students catch up and gain enrichment following a year of online instruction. How do you think this funding should be used in your district? And Oscar, you are up.
Boy, if we have a chance to assign as few kids to students and hopefully as we move through the summer to the fall, we'll have more opportunities to meet in person, which I think is gonna, I think make a huge difference. But a lot of the efforts obviously need to start on the front end with re-engagement of these, what I call MIE kids and families and get them back on track, one. And some people talking in terms of lost learning over the last year and, you know, what's happened, we can't go back and make up, but what we can do, and I love the fact that we're gonna start it this soon as the summer, is to accelerate the learning and raise the bar and really work very closely and not just put it on the schools, but work with community-based organizations such as ours and others, Father's Group and, you know, who are providing community folks to become tutors and mentors and to augment what teachers are trying to get going again. And the other kids that I worry about are those kids that have totally gone sideways and the older high school kids that are now fully employed or trying to be fully employed because of the impact that COVID has had economically on their own families personally. And so a lot of them feel committed first and kind of set it, you know, their education aside, so we worry about a lot of those kids as well. So good to know, good to know about the money coming in.
Yeah. Carmen, a repeat?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Legislature allocated 250 million for summer programs to help students catch up and gain enrichment following this year of online instruction. How do you think this funding should be used in the Redmond District?
This is a great hope. I feel that before we start kind of diving into the future, we need to kind of take a pause to see why these huge gaps exist, you know? What systems weren't working for us so that the gaps were created and so magnified during the pandemic? Some, I absolutely agree that with lots of the things that Oscar said, like we really need to make sure that the student-to-teacher ratio needs to be low so that those students are building relationships with the adults in their lives so that they want to be engaged in learning, especially also like clubs or music or sports or STEAM clubs. If students feel like they have that extra love and support from those smaller communities, then they're gonna be more likely to be engaged in learning through graduation. I know there's a lot of panic right now about getting students back to where they need to be and like jumping forward, but I think, yeah, we definitely need to take a pause to see why it, why the gap was created originally, you know? And so, yeah, my husband, he's a, he's a high school teacher and he does work with a lot of, lots of students in his music program are Latino and they are not coming back to his music class because they are working full-time now. They're still helping to support their family and that is just heartbreaking to him and he's trying to figure out how to reach back out to them and get them that high school graduation. So yeah, this, these are real problems and, you know, it needs, the money needs to be used strategically and to help, like we've said before, lift the students that need it the most.
Gotcha. This one's back at you, Carmen. What is your overall impression of how the district has handled the COVID-19 pandemic? Maybe what would you have done differently had you been on the board at that time?
I really feel that teachers and administrators did the best that they could have done with the information that they had at the time. Teachers and schools are very flexible and nimble with resources and things that they have, just to do the, I really feel like they did the best that they could with what they had and the knowledge that we had at the time. Something that if I were to go back and change anything, I would absolutely target those students that we knew didn't have home support, didn't have technology knowledge, didn't have motivation, maybe had mental health issues, really focus more on those students. My, my own kid, I have three sons and something I like to say, something I've heard in trainings before is they're, they are born on third base and what that means is they're white, they're male, we're middle-class, you know, they, and both of their parents are educators. So I'm not running for school board for my sons, I'm running for school board for the families that need that extra support to get to third base, to get to home, to get to graduation. So that's where my drive comes from is like, I'm just coming back to, I'm sitting in my classroom right now because I had a meeting leading up right to this, you know, those Latino families, those Native American families that just really need the support of adults in the community that come together, that to bridge all their resources and to just really lift them.
Thanks. Oscar, you want to repeat?
No, I think I'm good. And, you know, as an outsider, and I don't have any kids in the district looking in, it appears that they followed appropriate protocol in closing down as soon as they did, based on data that was trickling in, I guess, more than a year ago. And so I think, you know, being very precautious and now as we're getting ready to open up, you know, obviously doing whatever's necessary to ensure, you know, the safety of the returning kids and teachers, obviously. So I really don't have any complaints, I mean, in hindsight, I think, obviously, and Carmen speaks to the fact that if only we could have been a little more proactive and kind of providing a safety net for those vulnerable kids that are already, you know, behind and not as motivated and have, you know, are facing unique challenges. And ensure that the family is engaged, that technology is up and running, that, that they have, you know, certain basic tools. But I think a big piece of it is family engagement and I think most, if not all of our families want that and seek that out, quite honestly, which is quite the opposite of what I came across when I first moved to Redmond, Central Oregon in general, that Latinos didn't value education and is such a, such a fallacy because I know in my family, beyond the church, that was right up there. And the expectation is that, you know, we were gonna go to college and become professionals and have careers and so that's, and again, as an immigrant, you know, and making that happen, I'd love for that to continue to happen here as I've seen what's, what's transpired in the Southwest over the last 40 years, including with my three, with my three grown daughters. But yeah, leave it with that.
Okay, well that kind of brings us, you guys have both brought this up in different ways, but so I'll ask it in a more pointed way. The past year has brought increased attention to the needs of people and students of color. What, if any, changes would you make or propose in the district to better meet the needs of students of color? And this one's for you, Oscar, to start with.
Well, again, I think it starts with the materials, the instruction, the texts, the teachers mindset, all of that, because there's magic that's gonna be happening in those respective classrooms. And so it's very important to ensure that the folks that we do have teaching our kids, again, understand the values of diversity, equity, inclusion and providing, again, a more culturally responsive curriculum that engages our students, that, you know, makes education relevant for them. And not just in the vocational arenas, but I'd like to see a bigger push to get more of our minority kids into AP classes, international backglow courses, honors courses and beyond that college track. But, you know, those attitudes and skills and initiative doesn't start in high school. I believe we gotta plant those seeds early with our kids and expanding dual language and again, raising the bar, but again, not just with our students, but with our teachers and holding them accountable and making sure that they're reaching certain achievement outcomes. And yeah, and if they're not willing to abide by the values of DEI and cultural diversity and so forth, I'm sorry, you know, right now, we're at 20% and it's not gonna go backward, I'll tell you that. So we need to have those kind of folks in front of our kids, again, as we look to the future, to bring our kids from different backgrounds together and understand each other better and for our kids personally, on a very personal note, so that they feel more confident and have more self-esteem and have more ambition and look forward to seeing themselves, maybe not at Harvard or MIT, but why not, right? At least U of O or OSU or UW or maybe my alma mater LMU, but they gotta go somewhere. We're so disproportionately underrepresented in higher education, but not within our criminal justice system and we're a microcosm of the rest of the country.
Right.
But it starts here locally.
Great. Carmen?
Yeah, um, these are all great comments and I'm gonna add to everything that Oscar, I agree with everything he said, but I'm gonna add some things that came up as he was talking that I was thinking about. Absolutely, it needs to be a teacher's top priority to stop the cycle of oppression and to understand what that means. Not only, I feel like we do need to have demographics of teachers that mirror the demographics of the city, so definitely more Latinos. And also, the white teachers need to understand that it is their job to understand the cycle of oppression and to stop the cycle of oppression and to call it out whenever you see it or hear it. And so that ties back to the curriculum. Even in little kindergarten classes, it's important that you are including all races and all cultures in your books and in your literature and in your story word problems, I mean, so that they understand the things that you're talking about in class, they can make connections to home. And so teachers understand what kind of homes these children come from so that they can kind of, no pun intended, but speak their language, but understand, you know, what kind of families they're coming from so they can help build relationships that way. Teachers need to have more training on what it means to be culturally and racially inclusive and I think just more than ever, I mean, that's really, during the last year, that's definitely been amplified, but it's always something that's on teachers' mind to make sure that they build relationships with all their students, but it's really important that it's a high priority of the board to make sure that all students and all teachers understand the importance of their role in the community. I'm trying to think, yeah, in the primary and intermediate grades, supporting halfway to bilingual programs and making sure that all students are being supported, but then as you get to high school, it's important that you're putting a lot of effort and funds into the families that might be first-generation students that are going to college. It's really hard to, it's very difficult for families who have never been to college before to understand what hoops and how to fill out applications. There's so many little details that us with white privilege already have and we know and it just comes, it is just part of growing up that we don't realize that there's lots of pieces of the system that don't work for everybody. So we need to look at the pieces of those systems and fix them so it's easy for all students to have access to the ability to apply for colleges and then stay on that track and, but then understanding culturally why students sometimes decide not to go to college and maybe talk them through that and help them and support them to become professionals.
Thanks so much. So I want to be mindful of everybody's time. I know Carmen has a tight schedule as a teacher. So I'm gonna combine two last questions together and whatever you both want to pick up on, on that one, great. As school board members, I'd like to know your perspective on the role of a school board member as communicator and also the role of a school board member in setting policy for the district and other kind of disparate things, but maybe one of them is more your thing. So I think we start with Carmen on this one.
Okay, um, I feel like Oscar and I kind of touched on this on the last one. I mean, it's super important. One of my goals is that we are on, at the drawing board of when policies and systems are created, so we really want to take everyone into account, no matter their race, no matter their culture, and make sure that supports are in place for all the people that support that child, everyone and their family. And then, yeah, absolutely using community resources to help support, to, I guess, catch the shortfalls that maybe the school can't provide. There are two parts of that question.
Communication and policy, those are, what are the roles of the board for, around those two things?
Right. This is a tricky one. I feel that as, I've had a lot of experience being able to listen with empathy to fellow parents, fellow teachers, administrators. There's lots of challenges, but I think that being able to find commonalities and then build on those is really important. Yeah, I think, and I think I'm gonna hold, I'm gonna leave it out there.
Fair enough. Oscar, do you need a repeat of that very complicated two-part question?
Let me start with the policy side first. And I already mentioned the need to ensure that whatever funding does come through is spent equitably and appropriately and intentionally, and particularly in regards to the Student Success Act monies. Beyond that, I think before moving forward on specific policy changes, I guess we need to understand why in the first place there are inequities. So I would really push for equity analysis in the entire school district and that would hopefully identify key indicators that truly would measure, you know, those disparities that we see in student outcomes. And, and that's from the top to the very bottom and it's very comprehensive. I've worked with other schools, districts in incorporating these instruments. Sometimes school districts do it on their own accord, sometimes they'll have, they'll contract with a company that does this sort of work to kind of help in this process. So, and with that, it would be clear as to what, well, it would be clearer as to what policies and approaches and strategies need to be potentially changed, altered, modified, updated, whatever it takes. And knowing that we have that capacity to do that as a board, that's a cool thing, it's a powerful thing. And, and I guess that's where my role as a communicator would come in to share not only my perspective as a Chicano educator, but also the voices of, again, those marginalized students and families that really haven't had much of any say-so. So I would like to think that I would be definitely a communicator for those families and as well as other, you know, groups of students who historically have been marginalized and discounted, including the BIPOC and LGBTQ plus and kids living in poverty and kids and families that are dealing with homelessness. It's very layered, multifaceted. So one of the, as an old clinical, social worker, one of the things that I would really push for, especially in light as to what we've lived through over this past year, to really better equip our schools with, with mental health practitioners to talk through some of these very tough issues coming back and transitioning from almost a war zone that they were seeing vividly on their television to now hopefully tranquility, especially now that we're on the backside of yesterday's verdict. But, so that, that's the social emotional wellbeing of all our students, you know, balanced with the academic piece. I think we'll prepare them, you know, to what's beyond and hopefully that includes higher education.
Great. So I'm gonna flip the order here. Carmen, how's your time going? Do you need to?
I need, I need to head out. Sorry, I have a meeting at 5:30.
Uh oh, okay. Do you, do you have time to just do a? Uh-oh, okay. Do you, do you have time to just do a quick, hey, this is why someone should vote for you?
Uh, sure. Uh, I, hmm. Um, thank you for this opportunity to meet with you guys today. Oscar, you are amazing. Wow. Um. Uh, great job. Um.
Back at you.
Uh, I feel that, um, I bring a lens of a parent, I bring the lens of an educator. And I also, I feel that I'm a strong ally with, um, lots of different demographics in our town, um, in Central Oregon. Um. Uh, Oscar was saying he grew up in LA. I grew up right outside of Oakland, so the things that have shaped me as an individual, I. Um, I just hold dear to me and I just wanna make sure that, um, all students have the ability to have high levels of learning. Um, no matter where they come from, what their home life is like, what socioeconomic status they have. Um. And, um, yeah, I just wanna see all students succeed and, um, that's why you should vote for me.
Thank you so much for being here, um, and for, you know, fitting us into your busy schedule. Um, Oscar, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to talk too, but we'll let Carmen go.
I wanna hear what he has to say.
Oh, okay. Go for it. Go for it, Oscar.
I, I, uh, obviously am here for all kids, all families and making sure that, uh. Their needs are being met, um, whatever that should be to, again, put them on that, uh, pathway to, towards success. Uh, whatever that should be. Um. So why you should vote for me, I think, um. Because I have a lot of experience and, 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 and insight. And again, uh, not from a traditional perspective, but from a parochial. Kids perspective, from a charter school, uh, world's perspective, from a Jesuit student. And teacher, former counselor perspective, uh, as well as obviously all my professionals working in public schools. And as, as well as in, uh, community colleges, both in Texas and here in Oregon. So, um. I'd like to think that, that knowledge and, and insight and maybe a little bit of wisdom will, will, will add a diversity of thought. Uh, in our board meetings beyond the diversity of, you know, culture, obviously. But, uh, I, I think it's really important to, again, be that, uh. Going back to being that voice, being that communicator is, is really gonna be. Uh, paramount, um, in terms of what I hope to, to be on behalf of, uh, our entire community.
Thanks to both of you so much. I think Redmond school students and the board would be, you know, um. It would be, uh, wonderful if either one of you were selected for the board. Um, and we just wanna thank you, um, um, here at the Source for. Participating in this, um, process, letting voters get to know who you are, um. And, um, just for running because I know it's not easy and you both have busy lives on top of doing this. So, um, we just appreciate, um. Appreciate you taking part in the process.
Thank you, Nicole.
And having a chance to meet and, you know, listen to Carmen. I, you know, you win Carmen, I'm, I'm a happy guy too.
Yeah, I'm so excited. Yeah, same, same to you, Oscar, same to you. Thank you. I gotta head out. Thank you, Oscar. Bye, Nicole.
Take care of you guys. Bye-bye.